Okay, I call the City of Roslyn Council meeting to order. It's Tuesday, January 25th, 2022, and it's 4:32. Let's stand, I have a flag still, please.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have our roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Roddy.
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Weiss?
Here.
Councilmember Shear?
In person.
Uh, Councilmember Adams?
Here.
Councilmember Blaine?
Present.
And Councilmember Buber? And Mayor Hall.
I'm here. Derek, are you on? Can we get a motion to excuse the ocean?
I think Derek's raising his hand. Caller user two.
Hold on, there we go.
There's a hand.
Derek, can you hear us? Yes, Derek, I'm here. Alright, thank you. Um, one, I have one agenda update. We're gonna take the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan off. It was just for review anyway, but we need to have a hearing and it wasn't ready, so we'll just do it in the future afterwards, post the hearing. Um, that's all I got. Does Council have any agenda updates they want to talk about?
Um, I do, I mean, at some point, we need to talk about the propane explosions in town and what we can start doing about it. Do you want to do that as part of the agenda or during Council Concerns?
Yeah, Council Concerns will be fine after the Fire Department and Police Department weigh in.
Okay, thank you.
Make motion to accept consent agenda.
Do you want me to read it first? Let me read it first. So tonight's consent agenda is we have check number 229 to 236, the amount of $124,177.46. We have check number 257 to 268, the amount of $27,201.18. And we have ECH, the amount of $5,437.50. And then we have payroll for January 20th, the amount of $19,235.95. And we got the meeting minutes from the previous meeting of 1:11:2022 in there. And we have a motion on the floor already.
Second. Councilmember Weiss?
Oh, sorry, no one.
Sorry.
Just so you know, we got 108, 106 of about 124 was to advantage dirt for snow removal. All the rest of them were normal. There was $16,000 meeting on the CIP-1 project. Any discussion here, Council?
Are we expecting any more invoices for snow removal?
Uh, yeah, that's not quite half, so it'll be over $200,000 when everything's paid.
I saw that we were at about a quarter million adult, quarter million right now, or, yeah. Or, is there any more that are still?
No, I believe, well, I was through today. There could be one or two more.
Okay.
Um, because I doubt we've been invoiced for today's work with, did they work today?
I saw a front loader that I didn't see a name, Roslin, I didn't see a tag with Roslin, so I'm not sure if ours or somebody else's.
It's, it's all our stuff now.
Okay.
The last contractor left yesterday. So the loader that doesn't have a sticker on it is, is one we're leasing.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Um, and Bubba will talk, speak to that kind of thing, I believe. Any other discussion here, Council? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say name your name, please. Okay, then we'll move along, and first up tonight would be Chief Bland from the Police Department.
Good morning, welcome the new members for the Roslin meeting, um, to Council. I haven't had the opportunity to have a meeting yet with the new members, so I wanted to welcome everybody. I sent Mayor Hall's a quick synopsis of what happened for the Police Department during the last snow event. I don't know if you guys had a chance to review that or not, um, but I'm sure he'll get that to you. Uh, so, in other regards, just to update, um, I believe the last time I was able to make a meeting, I talked about replacing Officer Scott Uren, and that process has been complete. We did replace Officer Uren with Officer Matt Anderson, who's a lateral transfer from Colorado. He's currently living in Roslin, and he, uh, will start his academy training soon. He has to go to the, what they call the Washington State Equivalency Academy, and that's a two-to-three week program, which is much more attractive to us than the typical sixteen-week program for new hires. So, we're, feel fortunate that we were able to pick Matt up, and, uh, I'm sure you'll be seeing him around shortly. Our jail contract was signed last night to Claylum Council and to be sent off to the county. Uh, the only difference in that contract versus any of the other contracts we've had over the last decade or so is the cost, um, the jail rate has gone up, um, and will continue to do so with inflation and cost of operations, and that was to be expected. And the other stipulation that was in this contract that wasn't in other contracts is that if we have an inmate that becomes violent or unruly, and they deem it necessary to isolate that person into a one-person cell, um, we will be charged double because most of the rooms are double occupancy, and being that they were going to take up that second occupancy by themselves, we'll be charging double for that. Um, like I mentioned last night in Claylum's Council, I really don't think that's gonna be an issue for us, nor are we gonna see that very often, especially, uh, today because of COVID. The jail is taking extraordinary measures to keep their inmates safe and comply with any type of COVID restrictions they can, so they're already separated. Claylum also signed the Roslin contract with us for the Police Department, uh, so I was glad to see folks got all that taken care of, and we'll do business as usual for you. We did have a grant that we were awarded, it was applied for last year, and it was for this year for training, and what we bought were simulation guns. And what these are is they don't shoot real bullets, they shoot soap projectiles. And, um, that soap actually marks when it hits, so we can have very realistic, um, training with our Defensive Tactics Instructor and our R and S Instructor. And it's just invaluable training versus the video game-style virtual training. So, um, we're excited to finally have those. We did also just get awarded another grant, uh, from Aspen, and that is for the recording system in our interview room. Uh, right now, the recording system in the room, which was also supplied by Aspen over fifteen years ago, is, is complete. It just cannot be fixed anymore. It's old technology that's worn out. So, under the new state requirements and the police reform, there are certain aspects that have got to be recorded in order to stay locked. So we needed to update this rooms anyway, and it's gonna cost us over $10,000 to do that, and Aspen awarded us just over $9,000, so the vast majority of that requirement has been fulfilled by Aspen, so we want to send a thank you, thank you to them. And update on the new cars, uh, as you know, part of the budget for the process was getting some new cars so we could catch up. Our fleet was, uh, well, really poor ship is what it was, and we were having concerns of having enough cars to even patrol. The city did put in for three new cars, and I'm so happy to say we have them, and they're on the road already. There's still some updates and some tweaking, um, that need to be done as far as the camera systems, radios, et cetera. But they are usable, and they're on the street right now, and that really bailed us out with this crazy weather that happened. Any other questions?
Tenure, the process of hiring another officer?
Yeah, oh, yeah, so, thank you. Um, so the 2022 contract also allot for a brand-new position. This will be position number nine, including myself. And we've already received some, uh, lateral applicants for that, and they haven't really been advertised yet. We did have a civil service meeting this last Wednesday, and, uh, they discussed the hiring process and gave me the go-ahead to start with that, so we'll be advertising. It'll run into, uh, our local newspaper for two consecutive weeks, as well as other advertising efforts. But as it stands, right now, we have very, two very good, uh, lateral applicants. We're gonna hopefully shoot for another lateral position. And again, like I said before, um, experience is, it's a hard thing to put a dollar on on, and it's valued. And, uh, when you have somebody with experience coming to our department, it really benefits our communities. And so much time-saving, if nothing else, just to be able to train what little they need to know about our specific area and our specific department, and actually get them on the streets. So, uh, we're excited for that, and when that process gets, uh, going, we'll definitely be in touch to let you know and update you on the process. And then finally, um, I'm sure you all know that this town at South Claylum did not sign with us for a contract for this year, so that's going to require us to basically re-market all of our, uh, patches, business cars, everything, because obviously South Claylum's been with us for twenty years, and, uh, they're just integrated into all aspects of our Police Department. And so we're in the process now of getting our patches redone, we have to design, a local design, guy working with us on that, met him again today, so that'll be underway soon. And once we have that patch design finalized, uh, I think it'd be pleased. Choosing icons of our heritage for Claylum and Roslin, and I wanted that to be part of that patch, to be a good symbol of what we are about and what our history shows. So, uh, when I have the good samples drawn up by Matt, I will bring those in and show you what we chose.
Thanks, Chief.
You bet.
Any questions, Council?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your work the past couple of weeks. We've had a few incidences, and they've been pretty busy.
Yeah, I was gonna, I know they brought up, and I don't know if the fire chief is on, so I didn't want to talk in his place, but, uh, Roslin has definitely been a priority for us this whole last month, so.
Thanks for your work.
Yep, thanks, Chief.
You are welcome. Glad to help.
Yeah, that, that letter that is in the packet now, I mean, it probably wasn't earlier, we just got it. Uh, make sure you read that. That was to the Claylum City Council, but it identifies, it's almost all Roslin stuff. And, uh, and then there was also District Six wrote a very positive letter in support of the Roslin efforts and Chief Regan's specifically cooperation with all the different districts and entities, and, uh, make sure you guys all read that as well, please. With that said, uh, yeah, next up is Chief Regan from the Roslin Fire Department. If you want to come forward here, Chief, I'm sorry. Get you in the camera and then they can, we can hear it better.
So, last night, um, you know, I, uh, that got done, and, um, I just wanted to bring something to your attention, um, to all of you. Uh, we wanted to let you know that on January 19th, we received an anonymous complaint, um, from, for LNI from the Roslin Fire Department. Um, I had spoke, I've spoken with the compliance officer several times and went through, um, all the allegations of non-compliance on the explosion and subsequent fire on Montana Avenue, and we have taken care of all of that. Um, she's met with some of my officers at the station and performed an inspection. So, um, all of the concerns, uh, all of the concerns about fire were addressed, and most of the allegations about the station have already been addressed and updated, and the rest we're taking care of now. We're taking steps to improve that. So I also just wanted to let you guys know some of the things that we have been working on. Um, so in my first few months as chief, um, I and the other members of the Roslin Fire Department looked at the ban on new members for the department. Um, we've ensured that the policies and procedures, along with the bylaws, were sent to the city lawyer to make sure that we are in compliance with the WAC. Um, we now have laptops and a space upstairs to do online training. We've ensured that the second alarm cards were updated and turned into Kitcom. And I, we were just there, uh, today, I went with the chief from, Chief Jackson from District Six and Chief Mills from Claylum, and we're all got on the same page with our mutual aid response stuff. We've completed the mutual aid agreement with the Claylum Fire Department. Um, we've improved our relationships with the City Council and other departments in our counties, such as District Six, Claylum, District One, District Seven, District Three, and we've been participating in multiple company training. Uh, we've participated in multiple calls recently with District Six, and we're cohesively as a team with that department. We feel that it's important to keep our skills sharp, learn new things from each other, and have a good relationship with the other departments that we will be responding to these large incidents with. We've put an iPad, or we now have an iPad to do reports and read checks electronically. The reason we wanted to do that is because, uh, when the insurance looks at our, um, our department and everything that we've been doing, they can just automatically look at all of the reports that we've put in and put it in electronically, so it's easier for them, um, and it's easier for us. Uh, we now have a washer extractor to properly wash and decon our, for now, here. We're working on our trauma cards to help with mutual aid on multiple casualty incidences. Um, we've extended work for our fuels crew in summer and continue to do work with trucks on wildland operations. We're working on getting equipment on regularly scheduled maintenance plan, including pressure testing our fuel stations and air quality, hydrotesting our SCVA tanks, pressure testing our hoses, testing our, um, truck pumps, testing our fire extinguishers, and testing our ladders. Um, this hasn't been done previously, so, um, we're working on getting all of our firefighters through the Burn and Learn State Academy. Um, we've seen, we've received a number of grants that we've applied for, for equipment. Um, we've increased responder participation. Um, we've been working hard to get our station personnel and apparatus into full compliance, as this has not been upheld by previous leadership in recent years. And unfortunately, due to the lack of compliance and upkeep by previous leadership, there will likely be an increase in need for necessary funds for maintenance this year, such as getting more stuff on a regularly scheduled plan. So, sorry, that was very lengthy. I just wanted to let you guys know what was going on, and.
Great update.
Yeah, thank you.
Great update. Uh, Chief Regan?
The last couple of weeks.
Yeah?
Uh, do we have the letter from the LNI of what the reports were on what was, what was needed to be corrected?
Yeah.
We can, we can get that to you, Nolan.
Or even just like a, a couple of the things that you had to get changed over? Because I know you got handed, uh, you, you got handed some stuff that needed to be changed and be corrected, and I think you're doing an awesome job. Uh, it really shows what, um, the leadership that we have and the team that you're, uh, you're creating, you, uh, and the rest of the Fire Department. We've just had some complaints in our complaint, and then this LNI thing, and, um,
Me too.
I would really like to squash the, the nonsense, but I really, I appreciate that, um, you're, you're taking it upon yourself and the rest of the team to correct everything, and so that's awesome. But like, what are just a couple of the LNI complaints that were, uh, that were brought up, if you mind?
Um, well, like, some of them, uh, like, with pumps on the trucks not tested, ladders not tested, labels not on fire extinguishers, um, some of the things were like EPE non-compliance, which it all is now, that was one of the things that we had already corrected.
Yep.
Um, and, and there were some things like not wearing seat belts to and from calls, which we don't, we always do, so I don't know what that was. Um, and just, some of it was little things like that, and some of it was bigger things that hadn't been done before that we are now starting to do.
But a lot of little tedious things that kind of sounded like on that little, that report. Not tedious to like where we shouldn't have, shouldn't correct them, but really, as a brand-new chief, how do you know everything that goes on without knowing the littlest things to the biggest thing? So, uh, please don't take it to heart, um, with the drama that's kind of happened with the, the transition. I think you're doing an awesome job, and again, I think your team is doing an awesome job, so please, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Great turnout on calls, I'll have to say, that I've noticed a lot.
Yeah.
Burnout on calls that, yep. Before, we've had to page and page and page for manpower.
Yep.
More, they're already there, and the head office is like, oh, please.
Okay, moving on to the Commissions and Committees. I believe that CAC did meet. Do we have any information on that?
I was not there, but Kathy may have something.
Kathy, do you have anything about CAC?
Um, I believe it's, uh, Ken, Ken Blanford, the chair, was going to make a report to Council tonight, and I don't know if he's on or not.
I don't see him.
Uh, okay, well, um, in that case, I, I didn't, I'm not prepared, because I don't have my notes in front of me from the meeting, but, um, uh, the, uh, CAC is, is continuing to look at the, um, getting out the request for qualifications for, um, updating the LSP, and, uh, that, that was the main thrust of the meeting.
Okay.
What about the bird monitoring? I know that was a big issue. Uh, I think the last time we did it was fifteen or fourteen, I think? And then we wanted to do it right after the logging.
Yeah.
Can we make that kind of a priority with the CAC to have that scheduled for spring, summertime?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's also one of the things that they're, they're, um, that we're looking at.
Okay.
That the, the, what, what, what needs to, um, I believe there's like $40,000 that was, um, left from the logging, and from that, we need to do the monitoring, um, do, um, uh, weed, weed suppression, and also, the, the big thing will be restoration of some of the, uh, the landing sites, as there, um, a couple of them are pretty much a mess right now. So, yeah, those things will all be addressed.
Cool. Thank you.
We'll make sure, uh, Mr. Blanford makes the next meeting. Um, do we have anything from the planning and historical preservation?
Um, the meeting that Alan attended as representative will be tomorrow evening, so I'll have to forget the next meeting.
The timing always throws me off. Thank you. Um, and then Cemetery?
Um, I, Jimmy's setting that up with, uh, the two Commissioners, that's Dick Watts and Jerry. And, uh, I've already let the note, the Planning Commission know I wouldn't be there tomorrow night, because they asked if I'd be there tomorrow night, but I will not be there, so.
Okay.
Can we get a, can we get a schedule of meetings and times?
Yeah, I know I said I was gonna do that, and, uh, things got a little fouled up, but, uh,
Yeah.
we'll, we'll put something together.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry.
No, it's fine. Just, thank you. I know everybody's busy.
Um, so we'll move on to the staff reports. Um, Brenda's here with us tonight, so I'll do the library first.
Um, so I wanted to update you guys on what is happening with the construction in the library. Uh, the library is currently closed to patrons coming in. All the books are covered with sheets of plastic, and they have been replacing darts, um, on the lower, uh, where we're at now with the library. And then, in the upstairs, they're doing all the framing. And so I've attached some pictures of the upstairs, and it is under admin reports, and it's attached under boards and staff, so you guys can, uh, at your leisure, click on those and you'll be able to see, um, some of the work that they've done. Um, I am still checking books in and out. I have people, they come in the City Hall, and then, um, they tell me what they want, or they have me go pick things out for them, but I'm not allowing people into the library while all of this is going on. Um, we, uh, I applied for some STEAM grants for kids so that I can still do some programming, even if we can't do it in person. Um, and I did that last year too, so I'm just trying to apply for that again this year. And then, um, I'm, I've got some adult programming stuff coming as well, so that we can include, um, young adults and adults in this. And then, um, we are participating again in the Check Out Washington, and what that is, is we get two Discover passes that we can check out to patrons, um, for one week at a time, and then they can go visit the many Washington State parks. And other than that, uh, just waiting for a place for the library to be ready to open again. Um, I've kind of got some plans. If the library's not ready by, um, you know, April, May, then I'm gonna start doing some of the programming out in the park again and do Storytime out at the gazebo. Um, and that's, that's all I have right now, other than I'm doing some training right now on my library programs.
Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you.
And next up, we've got the always-busy of a SIM plot from Public Works.
Hey, guys. Obviously, we're gonna talk about snow. So, uh, everything, I thought went pretty well for probably the second biggest dump I've seen in my lifetime here of thirty-five years. Um, I was kind of, luckily, I got up here a little early, because I ended up plowing, I took our grader all the way to Claylum. It's like, Kyle called me and was like, hey, it's like, you might not want to try coming up, there's something stuck in the roundabout. Anyways, it ended up working good, long days. Each crew member did about thirty-two to, I think I did thirty-six, Kyle did thirty-four, and Jim did about thirty-two in two days. You know, that's also water routine. We had to make sure the first day we didn't get that done until about 4:30 in the afternoon, because that's saying Kyle up there to plow the water treatment plant road in. Um, as far as contractors, so kind of rundown on how this worked and kind of my opinion on how it should be done and how we did it. So we had advanced dirt and Mass X Construction. First things I went with were obviously storing drains, because that could make a big mess, you know, it melts off quick, and everything kind of melted off about perfect, really. So that's why we worked up North First Street, all that kind of stuff. Next, my three most important rules was just like a, you know, a four-star or whatever else, like, what about all the people by the way? You know, so we opened up, obviously, 903 Forest Street, Orbat, this county had Orbat done. I even plowed, um, one day I plowed Van House and Nelson Dairy, just to make sure it was wired. Then we had Fifth Street open up. So that's kind of how we went, like, like that, and then we just worked other parts of towns, widening out the streets. We had about five-day dump trucks a day. Um, we had Steve Ford's D5 cab pushed in the snow piles up there on Fratera property. The next week, I got the second of the city loaders, so now I can see the two, we were John Gears, those are pulled. Probably Jim or I or Kyle are in, around town. Um, we got the wash dog, brought up the, um, snow blower that's mounted on their front-end loader. And we did basically like the last one, but three, that do it in dump trucks. That's kind of a tight spot to like D-towers and whatnot. Um, as far as that, the last, advanced dirt was done last Wednesday. Um, Mass X Construction worked till Friday. And then, Thursday, Friday, and Monday, I just had three dump trucks with Jim loading out with our loader. And, other than that, I mean, I want to think of volunteers that came out of the Fire Department for shoveling the time, you know, that work, that definitely helped us a lot. You know, Craig Creeker's been awesome on if there's just flooding, hikes, and he needs to go, do, you know, I ask him. He's been super, like, awesome volunteer. Um, yeah, the other things we did this last couple of weeks, we repaired the mast on, had the papek kind of come up, the backside of the mast on the old grader, cracked all the way through. So once we looked at the front, there was a, basically, stuff been hit, and it started to crack, so the papek hit and fixed that. Um, we updated the, last week, we had Corrector Krim to come over, and he updated the, at the waste fire treatment plant. The weekly wheel chart, I think that building was circled like 1989, and it was, looked like 1989. So we don't have to replace it anymore every week with a paper chart. Basically, the mission system that he put in, it'll read our, like, million gallons a day, our total flow. Everything just goes to the cloud, and then I look it up online, gives me a daily report, and then we can just email that to, like, Beolia for our sewer reads, and then I, it'll create a chart online. So, I mean, we can make it look like an old wheel chart.
So no more of the rec, the record player style?
No, well, I quit working, and Jim might replace the motor probably a week, a half ago. It's like two hundred and fifty bucks for the motor, it's like, why are we getting it? So, anyways, it'll chart it all out, and it's.
Awesome.
Yeah, so, so that's done. Like, unless you guys have any questions? Unless you guys have any questions, the only other thing I really want to say is, with everything going on with the snow, the explosions, like, I mean, I want to say, thanks to Roslin, you know, the community, the people that live here, you know, there's always, you know, a few bad apples here and there, but just plowing snow, watching people help with the explosions, people are so awesome, you know, they come up, like, hey, they bring out their pot of coffee on Long Day in the Grader, you know, they want to, hey, eat a sandwich or something, man, I mean, that was, that's what I remembered and played on when I was young, you know, so that was really cool, you know, to me and to the guys, I thought it kind of showed what a small town does, you know, bad stuff happens, or tough times happen, and they come together and all that, and each other, so. Other than that, if you guys have any questions, feel free.
Thanks, Bubba.
Good report.
Questions, Kathy?
Thanks.
Thanks, Bubba. Good job, Public Works. Okay, well, then we'll move on to citizen comments. Yeah, okay, so tonight, live, we've got Shannon O'Malley. Could you step forward and name an address, please?
My name is Shannon O'Malley. I live at two oh three East Washington Avenue, and I have been working for the past three years to restore the old Cometto Boarding House. As owner of a historical Roslin building, I consider myself the caretaker and custodian of a history and place that doesn't solely belong to me. My boarding house is also the boarding house of the Meritech Gondo family, who owned the house for most of the century. It is also the boarding house of Joseph Cometto, the original owner, who spent nearly all of his life as an American immigrant, keeping and caring for the house. It is also the boarding house that served countless other immigrants on their new life in America. When I committed to the restoration and preservation of this property, I committed to the preservation of Roslin history, which belongs to all citizens of Roslin, past and present. Through my experience working with the city government over the past three years on this effort, I have found the values and priorities of the city to be completely out of alignment with this attitude of historical custodianship. I have faced an attitude of distrust and dismissiveness. My efforts to prioritize the safety and security of the building have been pushed off for years. Specifically, I have asked to replace the broken concrete slab with a modern reinforced slab that would provide the building with a much stronger structural diaphragm to prevent damage from something such as snow load. I am unable to replace my windows and doors, which continues to threaten the safety and security of the building. I am consistently met with the answer no, or otherwise been told I must accept my place in line of others facing continual delay. I have been told by the city planner that my building is not historic, and it is not the priority of the city to help owners of historic buildings preserve those buildings. Furthermore, she has stated that parking is a greater priority to the city than saving this one-hundred-and-ten-year-old building of cultural significance. This is an indirect contradiction with the Roslin Comprehensive Plan. This plan states as the first objective of the city's vision statement, to preserve and enhance the historic and development pattern of the community, and maintain and strengthen Roslin's designation as a national historic district. Historical preservation goal number five is to preserve, maintain, and enhance existing commercial structures, and encourage development that reflects and enhances existing historical features and buildings. This goal is supported by HP Policy Number Five-Dash-One, which is to assist landowners, contractors, and developers in finding appropriate uses for historical structures. Despite these objectives being clearly stated as the priority and responsibility of the city, I have received an antagonistic and unsupportive response to my efforts as caretaker of this building. I believe this lack of care should be disqualifying for members of Roslin local government. All members of the city council, planning committee, and mayor should resolve to assist owners of historic property in their efforts to preserve them. Anyone who is unwilling to prioritize the goals of the Comprehensive Plan should be disqualified from their service to the city. The work of historical preservation is difficult, expensive, and painstaking. We deserve a government that helps us reach those goals, rather than seeks to block us. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we've got new business. The first one we've got on here is the delegation of code interpretation appeal to a hearing examiner from council. This is on the advice of council, or, I'm sorry, from, the council is on advice of our legal counsel. And I believe Eileen is on with us, Michelle, is that correct?
Yes. So this is not to hear any of the merits of the case of the, of the appeal, it's just to delegate that authority for the hearing examiner to hear it, so I can schedule it with him, so we can have the hearing.
Does Eileen want to?
You can make a motion then to delegate it, or?
Correct, yes, it's a motion to delegate it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to delegate the authority to Eileen.
Second.
Kathy. Okay, so discussion, does Eileen want to speak, or?
Well, we shouldn't really discuss if there's a court and treaties involved, right? Shouldn't we let everything play out?
Well, just the thought of, if somebody's against taking the code interpretation to a hearing examiner, rather than the city council?
Well, go ahead, Tom.
So I would just, if we could just have, like, three minutes of brief explanation, the way the code normally says it is, you know, the code authorizes delegation of this, why the staff is recommending that we make this delegation, you know, just to, I think for the record to.
So the, well, the code, the processing procedures are just for class-one permits, or class, class-one processing, basically, says that the appellate body, I mean, it's the mayor, his or her designee for the applications themselves, and then the appellate body is the council. So the footnote nine underneath that table basically says that the council can delegate that authority to the hearing examiner to hold the hearing, conduct the hearing, and to decide on that appeal as a third-party, nonpartial, uninvolved party for that. And so as we've discussed before, that was why we changed, we rechanged a lot of those dynamics. This one is a, is a different type of appeal that we haven't had in the past. So that's kind of in the discussions with Anne Marie and Eileen. This was their recommendation as well, as to have.
Appealing an interpretation is what they're asking for.
It's an appeal of a code interpretation, correct.
Put out, and so instead of actually coming to council, which really is out of our realm and out of a lot of people's realm, in the sense it puts it to a third party, is what you're saying, which is out of, completely separate from Roslin, and they'll make the judgment on their own on where it sits.
Okay.
I think this is a really healthy way to handle this. I think it makes it more nonjudgmental. It's difficult to, don't have understanding of the language or how it works to, you know, as a Roslin resident, not to keep your heart out of it, and this kind of makes it, it's interpreting words, interpreting the language and what the words mean, so I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think an independent source makes the most sense. I mean, we're going through complete code restructuring in certain areas of our code because of anticipated people that thought code, they knew how to read code and how to write code, and we found ourselves in trouble. So I think it's best that we don't bring it to council at this point, and we look forward to an independent group.
Appreciate the positive comments there. Janine means a lot.
Thank you.
Any other discussion here, council? All in favor of delegating the code interpretation appeals to the hearing examiner, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say your name, please. Last up, we, I included, or staff included, just a snow emergency update and finance review. It just shows you day by day on what we were getting charged. Each one is a separate. The people that are in the building here, that, you know, we've been reached out to by the governor, by Senator Murray, by Congressperson Schreier, and then the local congresspeople are in session right now, so I haven't had a talk, chance to talk to Dent, or Warnock, or Ibarra yet, but I will be reaching out to all of them. The governor has declared a state of emergency, just in general, that was partially due to the flooding, but it also includes the disasters that we're going through. Now, as has been learned by Jeff Adams and was explained to Councilperson Cook, you know, it's more of a structural kind of destruction that they want to pay for, snow removal, they don't consider infrastructure damage, if you will. On the other hand, I see it as a public safety issue, because I don't think we could've got ambulances or fire trucks around town, and, and I still think that there's roads in this city that we would have a hard time getting a fire truck down. And so, and then if we did get another snowstorm, those roads that are still so thin, like Third Street from, if you go up there, we can't take a grader to it, because it's so hard, it would just break the grader apart. I mean, we would be going up there, front loaders again, then you need dump trucks again, and if we did have the problem, Clayellum's gonna need them all again, Ellensbury's gonna need them all again, I mean, we're just, we're in line with everybody else, just like we went through. So, you know, it was expensive, I would do it the same way next time, if we have to. And we're gonna get it paid for, there's no question in my mind, regardless of the FEMA monies, or, you know, the state and the federal government are gonna have our back, for sure. They've all watched and.
Can I make a comment? Just a few points, please. Yeah, so the one thing I learned in the FEMA meeting, that you were, you were ill and weren't able to make it, that I went to, was they talked about stormwater was something that's very, stormwater mitigation is very reverse, you know, can be paid for. And so that was something, I think I talked to Michelle about having Bubba, because that was right when we went through the other week and did all the storms, was to, they wanted us to take pictures of every storm drain, showing the snow, what we removed, because that is something that can be replaced with money. And so that was something they were really hot on, to make sure that you, you're taking care of and documenting all the stormwater mitigation that we've done, because preventing future damage down the road, and we have a recent storm in 'oh nine that relates right to it. So that was something that, maybe if Bubba's got time, I can get with you tomorrow, and we could talk some more about it, but we should probably start that documentation, because that was a hundred percent reversible if we, if we document it, if we get some grant, some other funding money, too. So that was something that was really stressed, was that, and, you know, general snow leader has to be critical of something to try to get it paid for, so that was what they, what I learned from that. So I think that's something we should do really well, so we can get a good chunk of our snow removal. The emergency fix, percentage-wise, has a lot to do with storm, storm mitigation and chanting, and we could probably document the heck out of that pretty easily.
Well, and unfortunately, it's not all done. Driving by the park, I see that a lot of snow is piled up to where that electrical transformer's at, that supplies power to the park. Hopefully, that hasn't been damaged, but once this, and I've noticed the sidewalk has big chunks missing out of it, due to whatever. So after all the snow melts, we'll have to reevaluate everything, too, because there's gonna be some cost to putting some stuff back together. And then going off that note is really identifying everything that belongs to the city and marking it really well, not just fire hydrants, of course, but every little thing that's out there that could be damaged if we ever get back into this scenario, and making sure that we kind of hand those contractors that map, and they know what's where, and so we're not damaging things. So I know it was an emergency, we had to do what we had to do, but just being prepared next year is something we need to look at as well, as a city.
Good, Bubba wants to comment.
Yeah, we had, I mean, we pretty much had all of our stuff marked, I mean, the nice thing with Advanced Dirt, we had, you know, like Kyle Nicholson on the excavator, Jeff Faust, guys up front here, you know, and I went around in front of them, and I marked, like, I was taking paint, spray paint, because I know a couple of those piles were cars, and I was like, are, you know, pipe and whatever, just, you know, just so we avoided that. But we did get a couple fences, we got a couple cars, and you can't expect that ought to happen with that much snow, you know, so.
And I'm not pointing fingers at mess-ups, I'm just looking at the future of next year.
Oh, yeah, we did, I did already, we started making taller snowballs, because some of them were buried in snow.
Oh, yeah.
We have snow eight or ten feet taller.
After we had that leak up on West Nevada, I was really nervous about a lot of those, and just bumping those, we don't need to bump them, not to be, that much snow on the ground.
Yeah. The one thing I learned in the meeting, if it does go to FEMA, whether the county, whether the county decides to go to state emergency or not, the cities that have done that, the accumulated money within that area was two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in damage within the county, so if us and Clayellum ended up with that much, that will qualify for some FEMA, but it has to be a certain amount of fund of damage. But it also was a twenty-five percent match, so you're aware of, that's the other aspect of FEMA money, right? And then we don't see it for two or three years, so.
The emergency group, search and rescue felt that the minimum is gonna be met if it's not been.
Yeah, I think they feel we probably met, we'll probably need the damage part within the county without even the county claiming to be.
Right, without the storm.
That's right, that's right, that's right. And so that was the key, it's not that higher than ever when you think about it, and they won't be surprised if things start in the spring or where we actually are, you know.
Well, you know what, I don't know why I didn't before, but I could forward that email that was sent to Councilmember Cook from our emergency, is it Hossakoa, is that?
Yeah, Darren, yeah, that's who we met.
He related it out very well, explained it perfectly, explained how it's the governor and the president that, you know, take care of a lot of it.
Yeah, and not everybody has to claim a state of emergency, it's great if the county does, but it doesn't cater our chances at all. It really goes directly to DC and our governor, and it really depends on those two right now of making the deal to get, to get us FEMA for dollars. And if DC takes the nod, and then that allows FEMA to be released funds for us.
There'll be more talking about this, and, you know, feel free to reach out, council, to staff and myself, and we can keep answering questions, and, you know, we're gonna continue to reach out to legislators and the governor as needed, and we'll get there. So last up is the council concerns. I know that Councilmember Cook or Councilmember Brodean want to discuss propane.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's pretty much on a lot of people's minds right now. I mean, for obvious reasons, it's been a really horrific year. I'm wondering what we can do to help, you know, would it help the fire department if we were able to have an inventory of, you know, where the propane tanks are in town? We could, you know, start working on that. I don't know if, you know, if that would be useful, but it seems like it would, you know, it certainly could be. Also, I was talking to Ann Minor, who told me that in years past, there were annual inspections of the propane systems, and that's, that isn't happening anymore. And I don't know if that's something that residents would have to pay for, or if the propane companies would take that on. I mean, maybe that's why it's not being done anymore, but you who have lived here longer than I have might have some input about that. Anyhow, I'm just wondering what we can do.
Just to piggyback on that, just, I know that the mayor sent out a great press release, and the Fire Marshal sent out a great sheet of information. I'm sure or I'm clear if that's also gone out to people who don't actually live here. I apologize, it's been, it's the storm and water bill, and he couldn't remember if something came in that, but if it didn't, I think that would be used. I have three people around me who aren't here very often, and had to tell one of them to clear her tank, and just want to be sure that we're, you know, the whole community's covered, so.
That's a, that's a great idea, Janine. And we did not include it in this last one, so we're coming up on the next round, so.
Okay. Yeah, but I think here, your press release, I think it was the twenty-first, really made it a really concise matter that would be really helpful to have.
Well, and that came directly from the Fire Marshal, so I can't take credit for it.
It looked good.
Chief Regan said that they're working on a propane-type note to go into the utility bill for February.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I mean, one thing is, I know, like, AmeriGas, I just had AmeriGas on a tank last year that I thought had a leak, and they would come and do a safety check at any time you call, free of if you're a customer, so, I mean, I recommend that everybody as a propane company, is you call them, and you have them come out and do a safety check, and, you know, you should put a flag or a pole for dead of winter, so you know where your tank's at, which could be something great for the fire department, but they did a leak test right off the bat, and I didn't have a leak, it was, it was just inadequate system leak, which wasn't actually a dangerous leak, it was something, some burning way too much propane, so, but they do it free of charge, I'd say we put out recommendations that everybody gets a check off with their, you know, their propane companies, and I think we all should probably identify where tanks are by using something similar to what the fire hydrants are, and maybe it's a are, and maybe it's a specific color, if you wanna identify your tank for winter, that the fire department notes, hey, those green ones are propane tanks, or those blue ones are propane tanks. But I think, you know, we could come up with some unified type program, and there's several things, Michelle and I have talked about the boxes, that AmeriGas provides boxes to break their valves from snowfall, and a lot of the other agencies don't do that, in the steel heavy-duty box that gets screwed, because they like to see their regulators put on the house, not necessarily on the tank, and so that's a preventative action, it leaves airspace for the regulator to bleed, so there's lots of things out there, it's really people, and then also, we know is, I know people are gonna harp about waiting for permits, but, you know, illegal installs of propane items are not recommended, in crawl spaces and basements and other things that we're finding, and there's no doubt about it that there's gonna be some illegal installs in this town, and those are probably the most risky things that our first responders have to deal with. And so, I think we need to stay strict with our permitting and coding, and, you know, if you see a neighbor installing something like that, you know, be upfront and ask if they have a permit, and talk about the safety, and how the neighbors could be affected, and this is why we have permits for it. But that's, you know, all the above, I think, you know, from safety elements to identifying it, to staying legal in the sense of installing equipment, it's huge.
And, they may too, oops, sorry, go ahead, Janine.
I was just gonna say, I don't think the idea of some kind of consistent flag, so that not just a hunchpunch thing, that would really, I don't know if we could work on that as a city, but it'd be a good project.
You know, we could identify something with the fire department, fairly similar, fairly easy, and, you know, maybe we could find out a way to provide something to propane users, that we put some type of flagging up, and work with the fire department, so they identify, and when they come to a site, you know, hey, there's the tank, you know we have to get it shut off, because if it's not a propane explosion, but a regular fire, they're gonna wanna shut the tank off in general anyways.
Right, definitely.
Yep, yep, so, you know, I think there's lots of things we can help our citizens with, but they're also gonna need to step up themselves and take responsibility.
You know, and that's...
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead. Another thing that was brought up to me by Chris Martin, was the idea that we are not doing regular fire inspection, or safety inspections of the commercial buildings, and his suggestion was that we contract with the county fire marshal to have annual safety inspections of the commercial buildings downtown. So, I don't know what you think about that, but I thought it sounded like a sensible idea.
Do we have a contract with the Kedney County Fire Marshal, or is that only for like, we have none at all?
Not presently, we don't have one, no.
Yeah, yeah, no, Chris, to talk to you, I think you're right, Kathy, I think that's a good start with the commercial zones, which takes it off of our billing department's hands, and keeps them in compliance.
So, how would we proceed with that, then, just contact the fire department and get an estimate of what it would cost us to do that, or...
Well, we can, we can work with Cory and figure out how to proceed with that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Chief Regan.
Yeah, I've been talking with the fire marshal a lot, so...
What did you say?
And then there's also, I was just gonna add too, and I'm sure, you know, whatever the fire department publishes, they'll probably talk about some of these, but they make some pretty inexpensive, like, alarms that will detect parts per million of propane, they make automatic shut-offs, those are a little bit pricier, but I mean, when we're talking $300, $400, I mean, you know, what is it really worth, so...
Life, you know?
Yeah, there's several devices, and they're not, you know, if you were to install, the code would require it to have some of these types of devices installed, if you were putting something like in a daylighted basement or something where you could do propane, but I don't know, I mean, my own parents have propane, and they were not aware that they make those types of inexpensive alarms, so, some of those are huge, I mean, that thing will sense it before you smell it, so, but again, those are all still things that you're gonna wanna test annually, and do that, so a lot of it is probably just outreach and education, so, and awareness, and then maybe a reminder every year before the winter comes, it seems that the snow creates...
If we can put a reminder in with the Waterville's about calling your propane company, and doing, having them come do safety checks, I think, you know...
Sounds like Chief's gonna work on that.
Yeah, yeah, and get everybody that has a tank out, you know, whether it's AmeriGas, A1, Mid-Devale, Mid-State, whoever, but request that we do, request to do a safety check, and maybe it's something that we hand off to the fire department, says, yep, I've had mine for the last two years, or whatever, however often we think we need to do so.
So, I had a question, has there been an investigation, or do we know what the specific causes were of the two explosions in town, or is that something ongoing?
It's still that.
Do you know, because I've had a lot of questions about, you know, folks speculating about what it was, and of course...
I don't know yet.
Do you think, you know, is it like months away, or...
We can't hear Chief Regan, I'm sorry for responding, could you...
We don't know what, they're still investigating on the explosions, so we don't know what happened yet, so, it could be, it could be a month before we...
Is that the fire marshal that's doing that? Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, we'll get your mic up next time. You can just sit over here.
That would make sense.
Council on Councils?
Hey. I have one thing that I'd kind of wish you were aware of, and that is, a couple community members reached out about the line of trees along, Nell tree along Clayellum West, the new development there, and I'm gonna share a picture, I think, if I can. This is one of the trees along that area, and as you can see, there's a significant tip there, one of those trees I think went down last winter, luckily it came down on the side of the road, but Doug Johnson, who brought this to my attention, asked that we consider doing something, so, you fall into this highway and hurt somebody, or do some damage. I actually reached out to Commissioner Oshadish, and that's per his request, and just let me be aware, so there's been some communication with the city of Clayellum, just unhappy to share with people, so, I just want you guys to be aware of that, that I've had that discussion, and see if you have any thoughts about this yourself.
Can we send that to the city of Clayellum and the Republic Works?
I think it has been sent, yes, I'll be sure. There's a lot of difficulty involved, there's a 12-foot ride there that was required, and the trees were required, the concern is perhaps there wasn't enough depth of trees to keep them, you know, from falling to them.
Just a minute, one second.
Some thoughts?
You know, speaking to one of the foresters that we've used, you know, anytime you cut a bunch of trees down, that grew up together, everything that's left is gonna be much weakened, and they're used to, you know, having windbreak, having their roots locked together, so I think all the way along, from the dump, all the way to, you know, into Clayellum, every one of those trees that's in that standing line is at risk of falling over, and eventually, but most of them probably will, I think just this last year, just by the dump, I think four of them went over, you know, in one of the fall windstorms, and all those houses, they have their little fences and stuff right next to it, it's just one by one, they're gonna go over. So, no, you're right, it's the city of Clayellum, and the county, and the state that are, but we certainly, they know, they better, if they don't.
Well...
I second that, you know, I've been involved with saving buffers that are 200 feet wide, that still along the edges, the trees, you know, something that narrow, the odds of saving those trees is...
I'm not even sure what they were thinking, to be honest, I mean, is it aesthetic, that there's still a line of trees there?
It was probably part of the negotiation of their development, you know, the development and this community feedback, and it was, can you leave a buffer, and so that's the buffer they left, and nobody thinks about the longevity of what they've done, and the consequences of the bigger forest being gone.
Might it be appropriate for me to also share that council, the Roseland council concurs that this is a problem, I don't know if we need a motion for that, or...
Let's leave it, you know, it is, it's city of Clayellum, I mean, if you wanted to say something as an individual member of the city, you know, I have no problem with that, you know, and you are a councilperson, and, you know...
I don't, yeah, I don't...
I don't think you need to be too efficient, yeah, I don't think you need, they know what's going on.
Okay, well, I appreciate the discussion, and I think it's just because we're all aware of it, and it sounds like we're very aware of it, so, thank you very much. I'm not sure how to stop screen sharing now, but I'll do my best.
It's in that yellow, that yellow toolbar that drops down.
Oh, there, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, there I am, had to pop it up, thank you.
Other concerns, council?
We had a cloud meeting last week, there was a nice PowerPoint from Senator Murray's office about the federal government's infrastructure stuff coming down, and there are resilient stuff, ready to be gobbled up. This time, there are roads and bridges in this infrastructure plant, which usually doesn't happen, and so I'll loop Tom in on that, and try to figure out where we can go with it. There's a whole bunch of stuff, clean water, trails, if you wanna do traffic mitigation, all that stuff, so, that's coming along, and...
Sorry about not getting to this.
And if we can get, if we can get Senator Murray's office, and all of us, you know, behind this, we can get some money, and COG behind it, to say, oh, this is a good project, blah, blah, blah. So, I'd like to get these TIP projects out there, make sure we get those sort of polished up, and I might be reaching out to a planning clerk, and try to find some of that, so we can submit that.
Tom and I just had a discussion about that, about your guys' meeting, and we thought what we would do is CC Bubba, Michelle, and the engineer, and myself and Derek on Public Works, and we would have a quick half hour, 45-minute meeting on what projects are ready, what projects are closed, what projects need to have permit type ready jobs, and then you guys would have something to take back to COG for those types of projects, and we thought we'd go to the source and sort of see where Public Works, the engineer, and Michelle, what they have lined up, and what fits the categories, and we could sort of take five top projects and itemize them, and what's ready, what's not, and where we're at, and then you guys can take those with COG and work on.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah, definitely.
I think, also, you know, this is still just getting started, and it's not 100% set, from what I understand, reading the information, and so, one of the things we have to determine is how we have to be positioned, so even if we have projects, you know, whether we need to have plans in place, or council action, or, you know, whatever's necessary to put these things in motion, so I'm gonna be reaching out, I talked to Jeff, I'm gonna be reaching out to COG, and just making sure that as they get more information on how this is gonna be processed, we, you know, we're in a loop.
One project I'd like to see on that, which we've talked about since I started council, is the water transmission bridge, the lead paint that is currently going into the Clayellum River, there was an extensive project that we wanted to tape that off, and get rid of all that lead paint, and kind of redo that bridge, and so if there is that kind of funding out there, it's probably not top of the priority, but we've talked about it for so long, and it is an issue, so...
And it's still on the list?
Yeah, yep.
That's a good, I mean, if we can't get money for other things, maybe that is the kind of project that, you know, that we can reach out to the federal government on, because that would be a pretty extensive project.
Yeah, it would be a very expensive...
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't scrape it and let those lead paint go into the water, so...
Oh no, it's a very expensive project.
Yeah, but I think we could get the Yakima Nation to help, I think we could get Suncadia to help, I think we could get everybody to put their names into, even Clayellum, because that water goes right through them, and it goes right down to Yakima, and we're just chipping off paint as we, every year, so I think we could have a good case, I believe.
Big environmental impact.
Yeah, fishing game, just about everybody would help.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good one, Nolan.
Thank you.
I'd just like to personally thank Shannon O'Malley for her efforts in trying, trying and trying to like restore that beautiful old building, and, you know, given that we just lost part of the Harper building, it's just heartbreaking that she's... Yeah, at any rate, yeah, I just really hope that things go your way, because, you know, we really wanna see these buildings preserved.
Don't know what the laughing was about, but yeah, I totally agree with you, Catherine, if there's something that we can do to help O'Malley's, I have to, I can't make any decisions on that, because I've been trying to help him with the parking lot across the street, but I would love, whatever we can do as a city to get that old building restored would be awesome, so, full support on helping our historical buildings come back to life, especially the dilapidated ones.
The only thing I have was, I was wondering if there was any, anything reporting act, movement on the OTAC contract in the moratorium?
Um, not yet, she's supposed to, the next deadline was just the end of this month, so this week, so hopefully I'll hear something from her this week, if not, I'll follow.
And is she gonna provide like a preliminary report, or something?
Um, I'll have to look at my notes, but I think it was that preliminary report that identified, you know, what it was we wanted to update, basically, is what we'll do at the end of this month, so, I'll reach out and touch base if I don't hear from her by tomorrow.
Do we need to watch, like, do we have to put out a public notice for some of that? We wanna make sure we get it out soon enough, so we don't have to delay any meetings, or push any meetings off, so...
Yeah, so...
We wanna make that timing pretty accurate, so...
So, once she gets that initial, that's the review with staff and everything, so we'll have another meeting similar to that kickoff meeting that we had, and then from there, that will begin the public process.
Okay, I don't wanna waste days or weeks.
Right. Is there a hearing scheduled for next council meeting?
Well, like you said, just depending on what the report entails, you know, when they wanna do their kickoff...
So they can knock that off.
So, we don't know exactly, but probably not, probably the second February, to give the Tribune and everybody time.
Okay.
If I were to guess.
Yeah, yeah.
But are we picking the Tribune as our paper of choice? That was always something we've...
It might have been a two-year contract that we had agreed upon, or...
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's until canceled, and they do a good job.
Oh yeah, no complaints, I say Tribune all the way, I just, I remember doing that every year, but, yeah, it's perfect, keep the Tribune.
Or local, or upper county, I think, read it in the Daily Record, probably.
Oh yeah.
So, this might relate to the OTAC issue too, but we wanted to do a public hearing on the ordinance in the moratorium, and get that advertised, are we talking about the same, Michelle, or is that...
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so we did one public hearing, but yes, we are going to do a second one.
And advertise, and probably coincide it with their presentation.
That makes sense.
So they can be there.
Thank you.
What kind of timeline are we looking at with the Old City Hall project?
They're on track.
Yeah.
They haven't fallen behind, I can't remember what the outline was.
I wanna say it was April was what we were...
April, first of May.
Mm-hmm, so, for this, for this grant, and then we still have that other grant to continue out, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're doing great, though, they're really kicking it, even with the snowstorm.
That's exciting.
Cool. Is there anything else that anybody would like to say, before I make a motion adjourned to tonight's meeting? Thank you, staff, thank you, chiefs.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Make a motion adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Good night.